For the Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting. And we'll start off with roll call.
Leanne Kesch Marsky.
Bethany Cody, Lake and Chapman.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner.
And welcome to Commissioner Kesch Marsky. First meeting in a while.
Yep, about five years back again.
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from previous meeting of January eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes. And I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone wishing to make any public comment right now before we get into our agenda items?
I'll say a couple. Rob's bed, fourteen twenty Cox Avenue. See the blight is on the agenda again, and I did see the updates that our attorney provided. Interested to see the other updates. Did send Jason a few recommendations on the ordinance. I was hoping that he'd pass them along, but I'm not sure if he did or not. What I would like to see with the blight ordinance from staff is a rundown of how things are actually gonna go. Is it gonna be? A planner or staff goes out and sees a property and then it goes straight to police? Does it skip the court process? Is there a court process? Are we just gonna go in and steal vehicles or not? It seems a little unclear, and I am totally new at this kind of thing and just wanna make sure that everybody's protected and see, see a good rundown of how it would actually go. So we're not running in and taking stuff from people that are trying to clean it up or are financially unable to clean it up and just need help getting where they need to be. Thanks.
Thank you. No else for public comment? We done, we'll move on to fix a new business request to schedule a public hearing for a proposed special land use duplex located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Address is nineteen fifty-three Warner Street in Marquette. Parcel tax ID is five-two-zero-eight-three-two-zero-zero-two-five-zero-zero. Applicant is Phil and Lee's Homes, PO Box two and eight in Wells. Eric?
Yep, so we have, staff has received a complete application for a special use permit for nineteen fifty-three Warner to construct and establish a duplex residential use there. This is, duplexes in this district require a special use permit. That is one thing staff has been discussing is whether that's necessary or not. And so that's kind of on our list of possible ordinance changes in the future. That's kind of beside the point for tonight, though. Map is showing on the left there. Outlined in red is the subject property, land information, including acreage and zoning, and then the legal descriptions. And then I just have a kind of a larger scale map here to show the general area just to be able to locate it better. So you have Miski, however you pronounce that, running north-south, and then Warner running east-west. Currently vacant parcel, undeveloped. And they are proposing a manufactured home of sorts. Applicants are here, I'll let them explain the specifics on that if you're interested in hearing that tonight. Being that it is just a request to schedule the public hearing, I don't wanna get too deep into the details. So staff would recommend scheduling that public hearing for Wednesday, February twelfth at seven P.M.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Anyone have any questions or would like to hear any comments before we schedule it from the applicants?
I'm just kind of curious, how, how big is the lot size over there? I see it was like two-point-three acres, so it's like, um, not quite a quarter acre.
Yeah, um, so it's a good question. So part of the, in your zoning ordinance, under the, uh, the heightened requirements under Article sixteen, I believe it is. Not sixteen, all right, nineteen? Yes, under Article nineteen, um, that goes into the performance standards. And one of those calls for the lot needs to meet the minimum requirement in order to sign a duplex, it needs to meet the minimum requirements, obviously, for a single-family home, which it does. And it does note in this table as well that the square footage of the, the units themselves, if it's a duplex can be, and the commissioners who have been with us for a while may recall this, minimum square footage for a single-family home per our ordinance is, is a thousand square feet. However, the ordinance says that if it's a duplex in the urban residential with a, with an approved special use permit, they can be eight-hundred square feet. Both of these units, however, meet the one-thousand-square-foot minimum without that stipulation.
Thank you. Need all the setback requirement?
As proposed, yes. Were the two of you here for this?
Yes, in case you guys had any questions.
Okay.
So we wanted to be here to make sure they get answered properly. We'll be here for next week, on the twelfth also.
Lots of, it was a nice night for a drive.
Do we need a motion to approve?
I motion that we go ahead and schedule the public hearing for the duplex, um, February twelfth at seven P.M. Second it.
Okay, more discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All set for February twelfth?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll follow up with some confirmation email, so.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you don't want to, please don't feel it, you need to.
Yes, we'll see in a few weeks.
Six B, we need a charter membership of Marquette Blight and Property Maintenance Ordinance. Eric?
So we've been tossing this one around for a while in front of you tonight. As I explained to everybody, the copy that's in the packet is not the most updated version. Loose copy is the most updated version, but like I said, the most updated version is mostly spelling and punctuation things. The copy that was in the packet has basically all the substantial language. So the stuff in blue was added by our attorney, Roger Zappa. And in your packet is a letter from him to kind of explain some of those language additions. Most of the stuff that he changed regards junk vehicles. He didn't, stuff that he did change was kind of in the vein of not wanting to... How's best to explain this? I guess not every vehicle that is on a property is necessarily intended for use on a roadway. So as, so when there's language in here saying that every vehicle needs to be licensed and insured, vehicles that are not intended for use on a roadway might not necessarily be licensed and insured. And then just by that definition, a code official could go in there and cite those vehicles, even though they may be in completely fine shape and running and everything else. So the language changes were kind of revolved mostly around that. As far as the, the process, as Rob had asked about, being that it's a new ordinance, we would kind of have to figure that out, not on the fly, but as we start to enact it. Our current ordinance, our kind of process with that is we warn the property owner, internal policy is three times and before moving to an official enforcement action. This ordinance very clearly states that we can go straight to a municipal civil infraction ticket. However, as Rob said, also that that's not always in the best interest of both the township or the property owner. If they are on financial hardship or something similar, you don't wanna go out and issue them a five-hundred-dollar municipal civil infraction ticket if they're gonna use that money to clean up the property or keep maintaining the property. So I had imagined that it would be kind of a case-by-case basis. There are some kind of frequent flyers that we're familiar with that they've gotten enough warning that we can move right to a ticket and pursue enforcement. But then on others, I think that some warnings, in some cases, warnings would be warranted to say, hey, clean this up, or you're gonna keep getting these warnings and/or further fines and fees and citations. So I guess that's kind of, hopefully that kind of answers the question. I know it's, being that it's not approved by either in the planning commission yet, this still has to go to the board and probably another review by Roger before it's officially enacted. So I guess that's my, my two cents on that.
And it kind of sounded like, from what I read, like either you or Jason would be the ones to go out, talk to the property owners most likely. I mean, it could be law enforcement if you first saw a problem. But in general, you'd be going out talking to residents about, hey, come on.
Yeah. Yeah, so our, our current process is just that. We, it's completely complaint-driven. Outside of, I'm driving down the road and I see a leaking gas tank or something very major, I'll, I'll pursue enforcement, but it's basically completely complaint-driven. So a complaint comes in, we send out a letter. Usually I'll go put eyes on it to confirm that, yes, that is true of the property. There is a stack of tires or whatever. Go out, do a drive-by of the property, confirm that the issue is there, send a letter. And then that starts kind of the, the three letters before the, the ticket. Really, the only time I'll get the county sheriff involved is if the property owner has threatened me or for any reason that I feel unsafe or whatever. But typically, I won't get law enforcement involved unless absolutely necessary. It can have, I have found in both this position and then previous similar positions, kind of almost, in some cases, a negative effect. I mean, property owner sees a police officer rolling up with a person from the township and, um, again, just kind of a, a negative effect rather than a positive effect, which we're going for. So this is for you for your, your review tonight. As I stated, I mean, we would be looking for approval, but if we're not comfortable with some of the language or anything in it, it's certainly fine to wait another meeting and talk about it again at the next one. If approved or when it is approved, if and when it is approved, it would go then to the board for their review. And the board, talking with Jason today, the board could always add language of their own if they feel anything is missing. And then it would be up to them for final approval, so.
Are you and Jason happy with the changes in here?
Yes. Yep, it's very, compared to our old one, this is much more succinct, to the point, and straightforward as far as an enforcement process. And as we've discussed, again, kind of unrelated, but related to the property maintenance issue, we are looking at, and we were talking about doing it this year, but kind of roll it over into next. We'll be hiring a seasonal temporary staff person for those summer enforcement months to kind of have a boots-on-the-ground type of person. So they would be going out and taking the pictures and sending them back to the office and doing that inspection work. Then save myself and Jason to do the letter drafting and sending them out and kind of the, more the behind-the-scenes work.
That would be complaint-driven as well, the extra person?
At this point, I think that would be the plan. I mean, if we do have enough, I think, public support, especially in some areas of the township that we know are problematic, to say, or to have somebody go out and survey and say they've got junk in their yard, they've got junk in their yard, they've got junk in their yard, just kind of do a mass mailing. Because most of the times, that first letter solves the issue. Or at least gets people motivated to start cleaning up and maybe doesn't solve the issue within the provided timeframe on the letter, but they, they are better about maintaining the property. It is probably a five to ten percent of people that get those letters that don't respond to the letter, don't do anything that the letter asks them to do, that those are the ones that we have problems with and they continue to be problems, so.
Are boats under recreational vehicles over in there? The only thing I didn't see, but maybe that's recreational vehicles, just as a clarification.
Believe it is.
When you say, where exactly are you referencing?
Under the junk vehicle, the last paragraph?
Yeah, that's a great point. I thought that was already included. I know that that section was not included, and I noticed that. And said, we need to include the recreational vehicles, but we can certainly add boats and related trailers or some language along those lines to include boats, trailers, watercraft, yep.
Watercraft, that would cover everything. You've got everything else in here.
Not everything else.
No?
Rob, you're cer, I would certainly welcome you to provide input, but I would ask that you come up to the mic and, because it is recorded and we have trouble picking it up.
If you're looking for input, yeah, I can give you input. For, for some, recreational vehicles might include snowmobiles, but might not. That's something that I know we have an issue with locally. There are people that have many of those. And also, vehicles being defined as having four wheels, that's not gonna include any mopads, dirt bikes, stuff like that. Or what about six-wheeled vehicles like duallys? Just some minor adjustments there.
Good points.
And I know we're going case-by-case basis, and that's good. And I know you mentioned taking pictures, that's also great. I would still recommend wearing body cameras when we go out to these places, just so there's an actual, real record. I have some properties up in Nagani, and when they do rental inspections, they come in with body camera just to make sure that everything is recorded. There can't be any he said, she said, because the five or ten percent that aren't going to listen to the first letter are the people that are going to say, no, you did not tell me that. And that would provide a much stronger record for going forward. And also, there is something about houses or homes and maintaining homes. And I totally understand why we're making everything watertight. But while I was a member of the fire department, we had a cardiac arrest at a house where somebody was doing siding to their house. It was left unfinished for about six or seven years because he was laid up for two or three and then was trying to get everything back in order. And technically, we could've, that would've been a blight issue. And he probably did need a little bit of prodding to get it moving. And I, I don't know. I think the ordinance is getting better, and it's gonna have teeth, which is what Commissioner Hakenin was worried about. And now it will have teeth, and I just hope the teeth aren't too strong. But if we're just looking at the five or ten percent, I think we should be okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I also, I think it's, it's very, it's coming along very good. I think it's still a draft form. I'd like Denny's opinion, maybe if we don't pass it today, if we hold it for next meeting. And Linda's as well. And I also like that it's gonna be case-by-case and how you guys handle it with, just trying to be positive with the letters.
Whether it is, I mean, especially in a township this size, I mean, population-wise, I think a case-by-case basis is personal opinion, kind of a, a better way to do it. I previously worked for the city of Grand Rapids in their code compliance department. So not in a city of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. There was much more routine type of, okay, they've got tall grass, find them. Okay, they've got tires in their yard, find them. I mean, that, it, it got results. I mean, it got places cleaned up. Again, smaller township, um, a lot of, a lot more personal relationships. I mean, there's some cases where I know of the person, I'm walking onto their property, or they know me, you know what I mean? So, um, things are, I guess, a little, little different. And so it just, I guess, from that perspective, I'm thinking more of a case-by-case basis. Not that, not to say I'm giving anybody, doing anybody favors or giving them preference or anything. In order to get results, sometimes you need to, again, fines and fees are not necessarily always the best way to do it, so.
It's hard to think of every scenario, but I think we thought of a few more good ones. And I think that we're covered a lot, and there, I can't remember where I saw it. We are covered like with, like other structures, or it's just that there was just some things of like others and things like that. So I think if something does come up, that might not be specifically drawn out, like a dirt bike or something like that. If it's blight in the yard, it's not being used, it's junked, or, you know, I think we're covered. I think we should look at adding the boats and the snowmobiles.
Yeah, and on that note, I certainly think that boats, trailers, watercraft, snowmobiles even should be, if we intend on siding those, if they're in violation, we should include them explicitly in here. But there probably could be a case made for those being under the recreational vehicles. So, again, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, so that's not a, not a binding statement by any means. But, um, and like I said, I think we should spell those out explicitly. But I think a case could be made that those aren't recreational vehicles, which is in here, so.
We should just make sure and ask the lawyer that, you know, that we're, we're covered. If, if there's something in somebody's yard that's like not there, like a circus parasol. You know, like it's not listed in here, but it's junk, you know, that we're covered.
Or it's a nuisance, right?
I think he makes a good point, too, about the, about videoing it.
Yeah.
To our property, and then there's no discrepancies.
Yep.
Good idea.
Does the sheriff have the body cams?
Yes. I mean, it is, I guess, a kind of a process and policy of mine that I'm always, when I go out to a property, do an inspection, have a conversation with the owner, or whatever I do out there, I always make, I have a running work document for any case. And it's entered today, inspected the property, saw this, this, and this, conversed with the owner on this matter. So I have a running document of things that happened, and on tickets in the past, I've submitted that to the court as evidence, but I think the, the body camera suggestion is a good one. That is something I'll review, both with Jason and Roger. I think in the past, it was probably a, a budgetary thing that, or just a technological thing, too. They might have not been as far along. But at this point, I mean, I would assume they're relatively cheap and easy to use, and we do have room in our budget for training and materials, and I think that would fit under there. So, a very good point that I'll bring up and discuss further.
How long is a building permit valid for?
So once it's issued, we ask that the applicant, not ask, we require the applicant to commence construction within one year time. So they could get the permit, three-hundred-and-sixty-four days later, they order the foundation. So that, I mean, I know it's kind of a extreme example, but that permit would still be valid as long as they started work and have continued work, so.
Those have to be completed within a certain amount of time?
Not that I'm aware of, as far as we define it, no. I mean, most people get it done in a reasonable amount of time within their, their, their budget and their resources, so.
I guess I'm just thinking about a house like, you know, what Robert just talked about, if they stopped working on it because somebody either died or
Right, and then
or not allowed anymore.
Like a case like that, I don't know the full details, but on a house where the siding fell down or shutters are falling off, or we don't require, and the county doesn't either, they don't require building permits for maintenance. It's only when they're, you're taking a wall out, putting a wall up, putting in plumbing, things like that, so. And in our case, like a zone, when we ask for a zoning compliance permit, when they're changing the footprint of the structure, so they're putting on another bedroom, or they're putting a accessory structure in the back, so they're changing the footprint of the, of the lot. But again, maintenance itself, we do not require permits for, so.
Do you think that should be addressed in here somehow to have anything that's not done within a certain amount of time required to be done, without, like if something that doesn't need a permit?
I can certainly ask on that.
I guess the only reason, one of the reasons I'm asking is, um, grocery, I go by there all the time, and there's a house that they've been working on for six or seven years now. And it's still not done, there's still stickers in the windows and piles of dirt there. So I'm just, you know, kind of wondering, they needed a building permit for that. And, but from what I remember with the city is you have to keep working on it and have it done a certain amount of time. And what you can do is, if, if you get a notice that you have to start doing something again, you can go there and work on it for one day, and then that satisfies that.
Kind of resets the clock, right?
So it's kind of a hard thing to deal with, but.
I don't, I'm thinking there's some language in our zoning ordinance in regards to that. I don't know where it is, I'd have to find it. But that's something I could follow up with you and the planning commission on.
Do you think with these changes in here, it's going to make it easier or harder for Steve Hakenin's situation to deal with all those junk cars and everything in there?
With that one, with the occupant, which is one of the three owners, listed owners, that's one of those five to ten percent, that's probably the one percent. And I mean, in short of, and I don't know, say we issue ten tickets to him, maybe that fixes it. Or twenty tickets to him, that fixes it. Who knows what that number is? But beyond extreme action like that, I, it's gonna be tough to fix it under this ordinance or the past ordinance. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna definitely do what we can to fix it, but it's gonna be some uphill sled, just, just because of the way the property owner is and his history and, I mean, the way that we've cited the property in the past, and then it deteriorates again. We've got no reason to believe that with us issuing citations this time, that it's gonna be any different. I mean, so we can go in there and remove junk, and probably in three, four months' time, there's gonna be the same amount of junk there that was. So, uh, that's a especially tough one. And, I mean, I've been with the township for, I think, three, almost three and a half years now. And I've been, from day one on the job, that was put on my desk, and it's still on my desk, and it'll probably be on my desk until I'm, I'm done here, however long that is, so.
Has anything changed as, as far as actions or anything happening there?
Nope. Nothing substantial, at least.
Okay. What do you think about passing this now or waiting for Linda and Denny to get back? Discussion on that.
Well, I think Eric was going to maybe add a few things here, you know, like the, we talked about the watercraft, the snowmobiles. Especially that was public comment recognition as well and we all thought of the same thing. So maybe wait till this meeting?
I, I, I would be more comfortable with that, waiting, especially with the suggested change.
You did write by Roger too, like what is the actual definition of a recreational vehicle, you know?
Yeah, I'll kind of clarify some of those things, add some things that we talked about tonight. Get it back in front of Roger and then back in front of the planning commission. Whether that's at our February 12th meeting or the meeting after, or the meeting after that, I don't know, but we'll get it back in front of you in due time. So.
We're not under any kind of a deadline for this done for anything? Okay.
And there's, I mean, this is proposed and we've got an existing property maintenance ordinance that we're operating under. So it's not like there's nothing out there without this being passed.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda for next. Six C, master plan update discussion.
Yeah, so this one, just like last time, is on there largely as a placeholder. There is a document in your packet tonight. It is a kind of proposed outline for the master plan. Well, not proposed, I mean, this is the outline that S E H has been working on. Or working off of, I should say. Chapters one and two were included in your packet at the last meeting for your review, draft versions of those chapters, not final by any means. And Leanne, I can get those to you if you would want to see those. I do, I don't know if they are yet, but we had planned on posting those on our website for the public to review as they should be posted, being that it is a public planning process. But I really don't have any other details or updates, so that's just there for your review and I would be open to any questions if you have them. Otherwise, that's that.
You know what, that last steering committee meeting, they were talking about maybe adding one more meeting somehow for, if it was in the budget. It wasn't budgeted for another meeting, so she was going to see if they didn't have to come up for, were you there?
I was not at the last one.
Okay, so she was, she was going to see if she didn't have to come up for that public hearing, or for the public?
Kind of public thing, and if she could make that into.
Yeah, if she didn't have to come up for that, then she could come up and do another meeting instead, because we didn't get over, we didn't do chapter nine, I think, right?
Right.
Or was it just nine?
I was thinking nine.
I know it's nine for sure. I, I don't think we did. I don't remember doing eight either, so.
I know, but I mean, it's going really well, the planning with the incorporation of the comments that we have gotten and we were just getting through it quite well, but we were, we did kind of want to see one more revision part of it. Do what we didn't, if we could make a meeting. And if not, she said we could use the public hearing as a final meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
So there might be one more meeting come up for the steering committee. Okay. Anything else on the master plan that, any questions, Leanne, that you might have on that?
So he was talking about chapters one and two and you were talking about eight and nine?
Well, we were.
You lost me there.
We were, the steering committee is going through all the chapters. We've had three meetings for that. And so we've been going through all the chapters, a couple of chapters at a time. And that hasn't gotten to here yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so chapters one and two that were included, draft versions of chapters one and two that were included in the last planning commission meeting packet, those are near final enough that we were comfortable with sharing them with the public. Whereas chapters that they've been working on in the steering committee meetings are still kind of under construction. So. And that's what they've been talking about in the steering committee. So once those are at a point where the steering committee is satisfied with them, then we'll push them to the public and get them before the planning commission. So.
Okay, last time we did the master plan, we had steering committee. Okay, so that's.
This is because we heard the consultant.
Oh, okay. All right, so that's where that's coming from. All right, we're going to get it now. Okay, thank you.
The new master plan will have the same format as our old one. We are updating the chapters.
Yes.
All right, no unfinished business, no correspondence. And Linda's not here for the township board report. Do you have anything you want about that?
Township board?
Okay.
Really, nothing. I'll get your hopes up. I really don't have anything under, under B or C either, but Recreation Committee, they were scheduled to meet this week, but they canceled due to, I think, lack of agenda items and the frigid weather. Planning and zoning report, I really don't have any specific updates. I can talk about a couple of the bigger projects for, but really there's no specific updates like on the veterans home or on the year or.
I could go to the work session last Monday.
Brownfield?
Yeah.
Nice though. That is, I do know that that was recorded and it's on the township YouTube page. I was not at the meeting and I have not had the chance to watch it yet, but I do plan on it at some point. So.
You know anything about the North Iron Church and when they're going to be opening up, I would just, somewhere, when somebody was talking they're, that over, getting ready to open and it'll be kind of soon. Have you heard anything about that?
Nope. Talk about open building permits, ongoing construction. But no, I mean, I, as I've said before, I deal with, Jason and I deal with everything, but he deals mostly with commercial as far as permits and stuff. And I'll do mostly residential, so he's a little bit more in tune with kind of those business and commercial type rumors and updates. But I have not heard personally any updates from them.
Well, he was telling me how they were going to have room for twice as many people at this one as the one in Nishoming and I've been by the one in Nishoming when they have services and they're going to have double the amount. Whole park area in the back. In the front, but.
I mean, it's, whenever I go through there, it's always open and unused and, yeah, so, I mean, I don't see that as a necessarily bad thing, but.
They have parking on all sides.
Yeah.
Take a Betty project. I do have a question about that, just in my own mind. So that's, they need what, there's 35 acres available? Is that the number?
I think it's 38, but yeah, between 35 and 40.
Is that owned, is that property owned by the township?
No.
Okay, is that North Iron that owns that?
It is not. It is, it's under an LLC, but it's a individual that owns it.
And does that run then from the back of the fire hall all the way up to Wright Street?
No. The property that the veterans home is proposed to be on starts if you're going, if you're going west on Venture. You've got the Fish and Wildlife Building on the right. The property line is kind of right there. And the property itself splits the road, so there's probably 10 acres on the south side and the remaining on the north side. So as part of this project and this process has been started by Michigan Veterans Homes, where they proposed to abandon that right of way and then realign the road along the south side of that property, so they're able to site the structure kind of right in the middle of the property, or not right in the middle, but in the with the topography and everything of that property, the most sensible place is where the road is right now. So. They've proposed to, again, abandon the right of way and realign the road. The road commission has had the required public hearings and as I went to, I think, one of them, I think they're required to have two or three. And all the public comments there were, were okay with the abandonment so long as, because originally they proposed to just abandon it and not punch it through. So the road would have just stopped basically at the.
Road at where that cut across is, where the Fish and Wildlife.
Well, the road would have gone into the property and served as a driveway of sorts for the veterans homes, but there would have been no more connection to Wright Street. But a lot of the comments were, we're okay with the abandonment so long as that road goes through, because it was recognized that a lot of people use that route to stay off the highway, going from Trobridge to Target or whatever. So that is, not that it's hanging the project up or holding the project up, but that is, they're kind of waiting on that to be formalized before they proceed with the formal site plan and engineering work and everything. So.
Thank you.
Speaking of abandonment, has anything happened with property on 41 there where was it the private department or the county had a right of way back there?
Yep, the I don't know the address off the top of my head, but the property where the Jasmine Chinese Restaurant was. So there is county right of way that splits that one right down the middle. And it had previously, a financial institution wanted to site their headquarters there. And once they saw that they would need to go through the right of way abandoned process, they didn't meet their timeline and they withdrew. So that sits as is with the right of way going down the middle, there's for sale signs. I do know that there's some issues with homeless people right here and using the property. And I've heard that the property owner just leaves the buildings unlocked now, so that they aren't breaking windows and breaking doors. So, I mean, all that what you want. But yeah, I, there's interest from time to time, people call us about it, but we tell them that there's the right of way and whether that scares them off or not, I don't know. But the road commission, so, and I've explained this before, but there's kind of two ways to do right of way abandonment, as I understand it. The first one being you get all interested parties and how interested parties is defined, I'm not sure, by state law. But you gather all interested parties and as long as nobody has an objection to the abandonment, you can agree with it. So that's pretty expedited and short compared to, to the full circuit court process, which is the way that the Marquette County Road Commission prefers to do it, understandably. Because say a property sells and then that new property owner says, hey, I don't like this abandonment or there's an issue with it, then it becomes a mess. So I think they prefer to do it the the official court way for that reason, just that, that there's no complications in the future. So. And that takes some time, obviously, with the, with the court schedule. So, what I, I guess what I know about that.
And I see we're having a ZBA meeting coming up and that we're going to be discussing lawsuits?
Yeah, so that, I think Roger made us aware, or Lynn may have found it in the bylaws, that we need to hold a, kind of like we elect officers here. It was a required meeting to do every year and we've been operating in the past, just electing those officers at the first meeting, whenever that falls. And the way the ZBA operates, and I think you served on the ZBA at one point, correct? No. With, again, the relatively few number of appeals cases that we see, it's, we call those meetings on an as needed basis, so we're not meeting on a regular basis. So if the first appeal didn't come up till March and that was the first meeting of the year, and in the past, that was the meeting that officers were being elected at. But apparently somewhere in the bylaws, it was noted that, hey, we need to be holding a regular meeting to elect those officers. And so that lawsuit update, I think Jason will share some information on, at that meeting. So.
Anything else for, on the, on the, Leanne, that you had? The projects? Any announcements from anyone? Any more public comment from anyone? Nope. All right, no public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners? Leanne, anything?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Bethany?
Um, just want to welcome Leanne. How do you say your last name?
Cash Marsky.
Commissioner Cash Marsky.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And, okay, I went either, other than welcoming Leanne back to the planning board. And I guess that's about it. So, meeting adjourned at 7:05.